If we can grab one, thank you. Stand, I'll call the tour at six thirty if you could stand for the pledge please. I'd like to make some comments about what they know, so that it's honorable. And I feel there are problems, no interest in this, well, let me ask you. And I'd rather, you know, just so, you know, just as well. Thank you so much, everyone. Um, okay, at this point, we have public comment. Jamie, I think you had put your name on the list already.
Yes, well.
Okay, go ahead. Uh, three minutes, everybody, whoever's commenting has three minutes. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is James Sterling, twenty Miller Road, and like, thank you all for serving in your capacities as selectmen. Um, lowering the cost of municipal services is always popular with voters. Newer residents, who trend younger, also want their town to be environmentally proactive. We can do both, lower costs and become more sustainable by adjusting our waste disposal practices over time. The cost of traditional landfill solutions is increasing substantially. There will be discussions on how to reduce these costs at this Thursday's Council on Small Towns meeting, and I hope you all will attend. Unlike in Woodbridge here, trash pickup is part of our tax package. John Gamsrowski, former Chair of Finance, once told me that when someone gave him flack about the town budget, he would say, "Well, we can cut trash pickup and you can pay for it yourself like in Woodbridge, and that would usually stop the complaining." So, we know that people don't like change. We also know that pay-as-you-throw is one of the most effective ways to reduce tipping fees. Isn't it prudent for cost and political purposes that you, as a board, lead by considering alternatives to our current trash process? I believe that our existing vendor has a variety of trash-reducing options. Please, at least, insert a re-opener provision in the next contract so that the Board of Selectmen and/or Board of Finance will be able to address this issue as it evolves. I can assure you that people in town will continue to discuss what you decide to do with our trash contract. There are several well-informed citizens here who can help Bethany catch up on what other small towns are already doing. I encourage you to tap their expertise. Thank you.
Bruce, did you want to make some comments?
Yes, I did.
Okay, you're welcome. Um, yeah, wait, hold on.
Bruce Lomas, eleven Sabrina Drive. I want to speak to item number ten on the agenda, which is the discretion of an ad hoc committee um, for the purpose of education of residents regarding reduce, reuse, recycle. Bethany definitely needs to educate on ongoing continual basis its residents regarding this subject. However, I don't think that the suggested method is the right way. Ad hoc committees, by both definition and general practice, are short-term, uh, limited-scope committees. Uh, and that is not what Bethany needs for its solid waste and recycling. I would strongly recommend that, rather than do that, the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee be reestablished as a semi-perman- or permanent until further notice committee. It would first be charged with establishing and implementing the education that the ad hoc committee would do, but beyond that, they should be given a wide latitude to study Bethany's total solid waste and recycling activities. Look at it in comparison to what other small towns are doing, see where we're doing something well, or where other towns are doing better than we are. And then make recommendations, also see what other towns might be doing that we are not doing. It could be implemented here without a major problem, or if we need to look at making a major change. Uh, but I think that an ad hoc committee strictly for early education is kind of a waste. Uh, people, you can only go so far. If you don't do other things, it really isn't going to accomplish much. Bethany's solid waste and recycling has not been touched for years and years and years and years. And there are many upgrades, many modernizations, uh, just many tweaks because it hasn't been touched that need to be taken care of. So I would strongly recommend a full solid waste and recycling committee with a full charge of reviewing all of our solid waste and recycling issues.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to make, um, a comment? Mike?
Uh, I would just like to say that I support.
You could just say your name and add.
By the twenty and I just one fifty, this was turned vice. Uh, I was on the solid waste and recycling committee for years, and I support Bruce's, uh, proposal. I think it was very valuable when we had it. It was a shame that we lasted. I think, uh, they are a permanent committee, looks long-term rather than not ad hoc committee. They look at what things have changed. They, they reevaluate things over time, uh, so I think it's a much better idea than at that half committee. I support Bruce's proposal.
Good for your comments. Uh, anyone else? Okay, see, none. We'll close public comment and we'll go on to the next item, which is approval of minutes. Um, can I get a? I'm coming one second. Laura Sun. Oh, yeah. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the January second, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes, please?
So moved.
Okay, second. Are there any corrections, comments with regards to January seconds minutes? There are none. I'll call for a vote, all in favor of approving. Minutes?
Aye.
Okay. All, um, unanimous. Okay, a motion to do the January eighteenth, twenty twenty four, excuse me, second, yeah, special meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve, please? I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Good. Uh, any comments or questions on those? None? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay. We do have some tax refunds. Here is the list. Okay, give you a second to, um, I don't think she needs it, just for the two. That's fine. Um, just take a look at that for a second. We have a grand total of six hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirteen cents, which covers five returns. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the returns as presented?
I'm so moved.
These, these are for, I have the folder here. They are for basic overpayments. Um, sale of a car, someone, you know, overpaid their tax. It's, it's basically, that's what they are, the refunds for overpayments.
I was just thinking about what Bob said last night.
Yeah, I have the folder here, so it's, it's basically overpayments.
All five?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, is this from the tax collector?
These, these come from the tax collector.
Maybe to, like, a really brief note, like, whether it's a, uh, sold motor vehicle or overpayment, whatever that.
Well, they're on here, um, as excess, excess payments. Um, this is the form she sends out, so it's, it just says property taxes due for overpayment. I don't see a specific, if it's automobile or, I mean, somewhere in her record somewhere must be a specific. I'm just looking what's, that checked on each form. It just says refund of excess payments.
I could ask them to, you know, if she could just give us something. The, the, what I brought up at the last meeting is, what if somebody said, "Why did you guys vote for Herschel Schlenk's tax rebate?" And we go, "Well, because somebody put it in front of us."
Right, theirs was for a car, theirs was for a car, but it had been taxed in the wrong town. They had paid in two towns, and you were the one that shouldn't have been paid in, so it's, it was an overpayment of a tax that shouldn't have been on their car.
I mean, I think your point is a good one, that, you know, we don't want to just rubber stamp something that comes through and we have no information at all, you know, but.
Well, we wouldn't want to ask for too much, but a little bit.
Well, yeah.
Could like your explanation now.
Right, yes.
That's good. So maybe she can add it to the, in future.
I would. I have a suggestion on it. It would be another column that would say assessor adjustment or overpayment. You know, because maybe they, I mean, we're refunding because of overpayment, but is it, they wrote the check out for the wrong dollar amount and gave us it had, or was there a necessary adjustment made for something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, then we'd have the reason.
Yeah. Okay, I'll talk, we'll, we'll talk to Linda about the adjustment reform or having like an explanation or notes, um, couple. Um, seeing comments, uh, hearing comments, um, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, a second. Okay, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Lady, that was the test, because we do have some cemetery deeds, um. Will gave me this morning, just for you. Okay. And I think I just laid in my, so I think that's you after I read it. So we have five deeds, and these are, um, a couple of them are hopped out because both of you will note them. Five deeds for the meeting tonight, all of them either corrections to existing deeds or old purchases that never got approved. So, um, in front of you is the list of deeds to be approved. Can I get a motion to approve the deeds?
So moved.
Second. Second, any comments or questions? None? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
Way to, we're way south, won't be north, it's quite desirable territory.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, it's perfect. Um, Russell Road, we are still waiting on title clearance at their end, so it's, we're just kind of in a holding pattern, if that, right now. Nothing else is happening. Uh, the proposed solar farm, they are coming close to a deal, I believe.
Yeah, so, uh, attorney Mashad reached out and, uh, the, uh, solar company is in the process of, it looks like they're going in the, the direction of the, them purchasing the land from the current owner. And, uh, they're working on that, but, uh, council reached out to talk about transferring, uh, the, uh, the recs that were related to, you know, uh, basically the tax benefits that were, uh, related to parcel A over to parcel B, uh, and, and to talk about process. Uh, this is a matter that will now be done, not at the Siting Council, but, uh, through the local wetlands commission and the local zoning commission. So, uh, and I, I had to discuss with both commissions the fact that, you know, this was, in order to protect this residential area, we sought out this other parcel, uh, and the first selectwoman and, uh, uh, and others were, were successful in finding this other spot that could accommodate a, uh, facility large enough to, for this developer to relocate.
And it's profit.
Right, and, uh, so we are gonna have to be sensitive to that when they come forward with their application, because otherwise, they can go back to this other parcel. Uh, so we may have to talk with zoning about set, uh, setbacks, uh, and that might not be traditional. Uh, but something that I would recommend is that zoning commission create regulations for this type of facility, so that, uh, uh, you know, so that we can prohibit it in the residential zone. Doesn't mean that they can't go to Siting Council and override that, but at least it'll show that the town is working to say, "You can come to town, but these are the areas that you have to go to." So I'll continue to work with zoning, uh, on that, but otherwise, we have a stay until July.
Right, hopefully this will close before, well before that.
Right, and I, and I'm speaking to council about getting reimbursement to the town for the legal expense.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay. And Simpson, we are oh-so-close.
Did you get that?
I did get that, and she wants the man who passed away to sign his documentation, which we told her would be impossible. That's the whole situation. I need a thing. We think it, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was clear in my initial description.
I thought so, too.
But when she said that, I thought she was like punking me or something.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, so deep, at the beginning of the year, uh, I think I, I was just overexcited to say, "Oh, we're gonna close this in Ja- in January." Uh, but then I had a conversation with Ms. Clark, and, uh, she pushed me back on my heels a bit when she said, "Oh, the process is, once you get me titled, then I, it's gonna take me two weeks, and then I'm gonna send it over to the AG's office, it's gonna take them two weeks, and then it's gonna come back to me, and then we have to put a grant agreement together, and that's gonna take another two weeks, and then, uh, the town's gonna have to sign the grant agreement, and then, uh, you're gonna return that to me, and then it's probably gonna take, you know, two to three weeks for funding." So I started doing the math, and I said, "I said, 'Well, that's definitely later than January twenty ninth.'" So, uh, an attorney Nichols, who represents the seller, is, uh, away for the winter. Uh, he, he, uh, has a second home down south to get out of the cold, so, uh, I'm optimistic, but that sometime in March, maybe April, let's say the break of spring, will finally be concluded. But we're, we're close.
From your mouth to us.
Yes, yes, it's, something's gotta come off this.
It started before me. Yeah, no, I. Um, okay, uh, the abandonment of paper roads, Rolling Green and Glenwood. We submitted a letter to, uh, the P and Z Chair this morning with regard to a review of the paper roads on those two roads, so that will go on their March sixth, I believe it was.
First Wednesday.
First, yeah, Wednesday, I think it's the sixth. Um, it'll go on that meeting for their review and recommendation back to the Board of Selectmen, so it will probably come back on our radar in April's meeting. And then, potentially, whatever happens, it will go to a town meeting for final blessing or whatever, if it's, so that's more or less where we are with that. We wait on P and Z, we put a recommendation, and then we bring it forward, uh, based on the recommendation, so.
Do you anticipate any reason why this wouldn't go to?
Uh, you know, I don't know what they're gonna say. I mean, I know two of them are pretty obvious, because they just go straight in. Um, the other two kind of come in sideways to that other parcel that was where the original solar farm was potentially going to go. Um, that, even if they were abandoned, it would not necessarily land lock the property, because it has the entire Bethmore Road, uh, access. But there's wetlands in the property and stuff like that, so it's gonna be their kind of call as to how, how we'll bring that forward.
No, thank you, that's, that's, that's.
Yeah, because there's wetland right in the middle, yeah.
Uh, just so this board is clear, what's before zoning is only a referral. It's so, they're not taking any action, they're simply issuing a report. A favorable report means that the legislative body, the town meeting, has to only have a, a regular majority to support the initiative. If it's a negative report, then it's a supermajority at the town meeting, and this could be a mixed bag. Right, they could say, "The two paper roads that are going extending off the cul-de-sac, I'll say, to the north, uh, or straight, uh, whichever direction that is, those should be abandoned, because they're paper roads into nowhere."
Right.
But the paper roads going this, uh, we'll say east and west, uh, those provide access to the rear parcel of Mr. Fisk's property. I will say, based on the, the, uh, Denny V, V Tomé lawsuit that came out of Orange, Mr. Fisk's property doesn't have any rights to those paper roads. Uh, what the, uh, landowner in Orange was, discovered was, only if the town developed the road, would, because the town is the one with the rights in the paper road, it's a public right of way. So that developer cannot force the town to develop those roads. Uh, and so, Mr. Fisk's, based on that, that decision, that court decision, really has no standing to compel uh, any development off of those paper roads. Again, that's something for zoning ultimately to consider, uh, and, uh, we'll wait to see what they say.
And do you happen to know if Mr. Fisk has a position? Does he, has he said any preference in this matter?
I, I assume he'll come out to zoning to let his position be known, or, or, you know, but, uh, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, I just, we have not heard anything directly from him, so if he comes forward, it potentially could be at the P and Z meeting.
But his la- his land is not landlocked.
Right, 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 yeah. So, um, Leslie, any quick updates? I'll do the trip one at the end, but you can go with the others.
All right, ARPA, we are working towards wrapping up the spending on all open projects so that we can close out the spending within the guidelines that, as set forth with ARPA. Um, steep, we are waiting on the state to close out the twenty-three grant, and we just received and signed the contract for the twenty-four grant. Um, the two Carrera grants, the window project is complete, the gym is underway. Uh, the Deloro grant of one million dollars, the project has started. We are working on a bid per project area basis on that. Um, so, we've broken it down into various areas of what we want to do, and we will go out to bid on each project accordingly.
And, and I will say, we were informed last week that we did not get the trip grant for the Round Hill Road project. Um, yes, I was, yes, I have no idea where my blood pressure went that day. Um, I went straight to the Commissioner of DOT with an email.
Was there a rationale?
Uh, we're gonna have a debriefing, they said, "When the dust settles." I'm not quite sure what that means, when the dust settles, but I'm gonna stay on it, because I just got the official letter right before I came in here tonight. And I'm going to make sure we get that debriefing sooner than later, and I asked the question, because the way the letter was worded, it sounds like we're gonna have to start from square one again, which I find a little disconcerting, because we were shovel-ready with that project last summer, when we initiated the first application, so, um, let's see, we'll see how that all.
How much was the funding?
Five hundred thousand.
Right, okay, right.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, yeah.
So they didn't give you any information at all?
No, like, sorry, you didn't get it, and, so, yes, after my numerous emails to everybody and their brother last week, they know where I stand, and I'm not letting it go.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, it was not a, not a good day in the, in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Um, okay, item number ten, listening to the, um, comments that were made earlier. We may start with an ad hoc committee just to sort of get a grasp on which direction we want to go and how we want to advise the public. It certainly, you know, we can look into reactivating that other, that other group again. I'm gonna, I think Will still has that group on one of his older lists, so to look to see who the former members were. I don't know, some of them have left town, or what the status may be. Um, so certainly look into who was on the former, uh, group, and, but I, I think it might be who was just to start to get an educational piece out to, to people. Um, so I think I'll work with Don and Leslie and maybe even Vin to sort of put together what the, um, direction of the committee will be, even though it may be a short term, uh, and we certainly can use the bulletin as a, a, um, vehicle for educating, uh, the public and, and, uh, the town website and any other kind of social media that we possibly can, can share it out on, so. Um, it is definitely a, an issue, uh, there's no question. We are in the process of actually putting together an RFP for, um, you know, municipal solid waste recycling, because our contract does end with the current, uh, vendor, uh, June thirtieth. So, um, you know, we are clearly aware of the issues, there's no question. I mean, tipping, tipping fees are out of control, and it's a lot.
Explain what that is. I'm like, really, I really don't know a lot about this.
That's okay, that's one of the things we want to educate, because I don't understand, when you throw away your garbage, it costs us by ton to dump it, and, and, you know.
The tip?
Yeah, well, yeah, yes, that's, that's, that's pretty much.
The tipping fee is the charge to get rid of the weight, the solid waste, after it is picked up at the curb, and there is a cost incurred to pick it up at the curb as well, so it's a double.
Jamie mentioned it, too.
Right, there's a, no, we, we got it, she understands now, thank you, um, but there, there's a, there's always something, it's, it's, you know, it's to pick it up, it's to dump it, I mean, so it's a cost, a cost, a cost, so we're trying, the biggest piece is educating to pu- the public to understand that their actions have a cost. If they are not well-educated and do the recycling and do the, I cannot tell you the number of times I've stopped the garbage truck on the road, and I said, "That house, that house, and that house have all recyclables out with their garbage. Do not pick them up, because you have been contracted for municipal solid waste only, not for recycling."
And they sometimes take, take.
I think if people wrap it a certain way, the guys think it's garbage, and they're going to, you know, but if it's obvious that it's recycling, I've stopped the truck, I, and I said, "Hey, guys, that one, that one, and that one, you leave the recyclables, because that's what you're not, you're not contracted for that stuff." So, you know, it, it's up to the public partial, not partially, a lot, to do the right thing as well, because they don't understand it costs if you're throwing all the wrong stuff in the garbage. Um, so it, it's an education, it's a big education piece.
Um, I, I, I wanna, I.
Yeah, like, you mentioned recycling in the contract, you know, do we have to have three contracts coming up?
What we are going to do is, we are gonna put out a bid for three ways. We're gonna put it out for municipal solid waste, recycling, and a combination.
So, so USA hauling contract is also up in addition to the RWS?
Um, no, the RWS is a separate contract.
The RWS contract is up for trash pickup at curbside.
Right.
The wheel abrader contract is up.
What's the status of the USA hauling?
USA hauling does not have a contract.
Well, there is no contract.
There is no contract that I can find for USA hauling that is basically a month by month. We.
Sort of an open-ended handshake.
Correct.
Okay.
There, and I, and I had asked about that, and it was like, "Well, we've been doing just fine as we are," was the answer that I got, um. But I want to add to what Paula said, an ad hoc does not mean that this ad hoc committee will not say, "We need a long-term committee to work on this." Please do not think that this is something that we are going to walk away from in three weeks. If this, if the minds that come together and say, "We can do A, B, and C now immediately, but this is a problem that requires extended time, energy, and effort. We need to establish a formal committee or commission that's going to have long-term lasting work and continuity on this with the town. That will come out of this ad hoc committee." So, it's not just.
A temporary thing.
It's, it's ad hoc, yes, it does mean temporary, but that does not mean that the committee will not recommend a permanent solution. You know, or a permanent committee to oversee this.
Yeah.
Um, and I, for, as a point of order, want to thank Jamie for his comment on adding a re-opener into the contract, because I think that is an excellent idea. I don't know if we can work it into, I don't know if we can work it into the contract, but it is, because you're correct. The garbage industry is constantly evolving, and if we don't want to limit ourself to what we can do two years from now, if we are, if we sign a four- or five-year contract.
Well, yeah.
That'll, that'll probably work for the trash, it could make it two years and then renewable. If you're, if you're asking for an alternate bid for, um, starting curbside recycling and they have to purchase containers.
Correct.
They're gonna have a, you'll probably have to buy them out if you want to get out after two years, because they will have built into their payments over a long, long time period.
Right. Can I ask a question about this group I'm hearing about, the solid waste committee that used to exist?
I have to go back and research it, I don't know.
Do you know when it, they stopped meeting?
I don't, I have to go back and research it, that's why I'm gonna have to talk to.
And, and I, I wonder, I, I'd be interested in knowing when they stopped meeting, or when they were established, how long, but, and I'm also interested in, um, knowing, is there a downside, if there's interest?
What do you mean downside?
Is there a downside to, um, saying, "Yeah, let's have this group reform?"
I can't imagine that there would be a downside, I think, because it's only for the benefit of the public, to make sure that they're well-educated and they're doing the right thing.
Right.
Because they don't understand, yes, they're paying taxes for municipal solid waste curbside pickup, but if you're not doing the right thing and you're throwing all your municipal side, solid waste in with the garbage, it, it ups our tipping fees, if, you know, because it's by ton, and if, you know, right.
And that's why you stop the truck in the road.
You can't do that, you know, because you're not contracted to do that.
Um, no, I have to admit, this is not a, a subject that I know a lot about, I'm, you know, live here, obviously. No, I have to admit, this is not a, a subject that I know a lot about, I'm, you know, live here, obviously I'm interested and I'd like to learn more about this. Because I think this is something where everyone is probably gonna agree, right? Well, the, the bill is totally the point though, right? The point is the bill, and I, I think that that's where there's potential agreement, right? Like, if we do research or the group, and I'm just making this up now, again, I don't know a lot about this, but if there's a, a better way to do things that could maybe reduce what the bill is that then what would be the opposition to that?
It's behavior.
Well, it, it is.
It is, well, yeah, I mean, well, then
The hardest thing to change.
Right, and I, and I think if people don't really want to go there, or if that's, if, if some people are gonna say I'd rather pay more than change my behavior, at least we have the information on the table.
The current company, the current contractor did it's gotta be over a year now, I guess. Did the recyclable curbside pickup as a private, you know, I think twice a month they come curbside to your house, for, I think it's eighteen dollars and change a, a month. But that, people pay for that privately, and he said he would only do it if he had a minimum of at least a hundred households that had participated in it. I think he got well over his hundred.
Eighteen dollars a month?
Eighteen ninety-nine or something a, a month, if it comes twice, my understanding, it comes twice a month on a Friday. And it's all the recyclables in the, they provide the barrel, because you'll see some households have a big barrel that has the RWS on the side, that's the recyclables on a Friday. So, some people don't want to go up to the recycling center, but they're willing to pay the eighteen dollars and change a month to have it be curbside pickup. So, you know, everybody's got different habits, so to speak, so it's, it's a matter of retraining, educating. Because if there's a cost, people have to understand, you know, oh, I'm throwing it out in the garbage, I get curbside pickup, I pay for that. But you're also tweaking the tipping fees when it goes to the facility where it's being dumped. So.
Now, this, this has all been very interesting, I, I, again, I don't know a lot about this, but I would like to learn more about this, and I, I was thinking a group like the solid waste group could be a way to.
It's gonna be an ongoing conversation, trust, trash is not going away. We are gonna, we, we live with trash every day, so we're, we're gonna, there'll be a conversation piece for a while.
Vin, do you have any thing that I, you, you know what, that I could look at to kind of do a little bit of?
You know, uh.
Reading or?
I was gonna say, they might be through the state, but you know what else? I remember when I looked up the obligations with respect to if you provide curbside, you have to provide recycling, things like that, we could probably forward you some links to the state to start. I mean, this is something that will you could spend a lifetime on and still not totally understand.
Isn't recycle CT is the, is the website, there's recycle CT, I think. Yeah, so there, there are a few Google, you know, recycling.
Yeah, if there's something more specific, we'll, we'll definitely get it.
Also, the DEET website will have, will have the information as well. So, yeah, so we, we will, we will kind of get the ball rolling a little bit here, but we are, like I say, we are finalizing the RFP to get it out, because the contract is only a few more months, so.
No, I appreciate this conversation and these links, because this isn't something that you could do like the day before a meeting like this, right? Learning as much as I can.
Okay.
So, so do you, how, I mean, if people are interested in starting this waste management again, is, is that something that people can do? Can we do that as a town?
Well, I will, I will figure out the best way to, I'm gonna look up the old group and see who was on that, and then maybe reach out to them to see if they would be interested in sort of reactivating the group again. I have to see, some people may have moved past, I don't know who was on the previous group, so. But I mean, we can certainly reach out to sustainable CT members in town, the conservation commission, you know, groups like that, that might have an interest in participating, so.
I, I think you're a big, a good idea, you know, because because if everyone goes through on research, like I kind of plan on doing, then everyone's reinventing the wheel, right?
It's, it's, like I said, trash isn't going away, so we'll, we talking about it, again, I'm sure.
Thank you, I think that, I think that that's that would be, that would be great.
No problem. Actually, I do have an item, is there any other discussion on this, are, are we good right now? Because we know we're gonna sort of go forward trying to, to do an ad hoc group and activate the, the more permanent group.
I just want, was wondering, how's the ad hoc group get formed, what do?
Well, I'm gonna look at some of the members of the, of the commission and, you know, we will, we will reach out and see if they have some volunteers that want to.
You'll, you'll come back with a report next month.
Yeah, yeah, if, if we don't get it started before that, we will certainly, well, we'll update either way, whatever's happening. I do actually have one item under of their business, which was, I don't know if any of you who knew Paul Menger, he passed, and they had his funeral this weekend, and they were going to have a gathering of family and friends at their house after the funeral. But unfortunately, they had a pipe burst in the house and they yeah, so they were left kind of stranded and the center station happened to be available, so, you know, we offered that to them to to use, so. Will had sent me an email requesting that we waive the fee for the use, because it was an emergency, it wasn't their intention to be using the facility, but they kind of got stuck and so it would be up to us to approve a waiver of the fee, it's a hundred dollars for the, for center station and it's it include, well, it doesn't include, in it did, and there would be a fifty dollar, what's called, we use, call it a reservation fee, but it covers custodial setup cleanup and that kind of thing. So in fairness to the custodian who covers the setup and cleanup, I thought we could waive the fee, but then they, they were also fine with if they had to pay the fifty dollar reservation fee to cover the cost of the setup and cleanup. So can I have a motion to approve the waiver of the actual fee and then just indicate that they would pay the fifty dollar reservation fee?
I move to waive the, the hundred dollar fee and have them pay the fifty.
Second motion.
Second, any other comments or questions with regard to this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Anything else? There are nothing, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, second. We're unanimous, we are ending at seven oh nine. Thank you, everyone, thank you for those who attended.